I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree of justice or wrong.
Good evening. Let Clerk please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh... Sorry? Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Jermaine?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Clerk Hopkins here. Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
We have corner of the board. We also have President Township Manager James Wickman.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
Still moved.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number five is call to the public. Anybody at call to the public this evening? Being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Still moved.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper. Is there any discussion on our consent agenda? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. Motion carries.
Item number seven is a public hearing. We set this up for the Safer Roads Plan. I'm going to have Manager Wickman review the project proposal as it states that would be on our ballot at our election. Is it next week or two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Two weeks from today. And then we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor. I will touch just briefly on this if nothing else, maybe for the benefit of our viewing audience. We have, of course, had several public meetings and public participation pieces that has brought us to this point. The short version is that, of course, we convened a task force of residents. It's been almost a year ago now that they started meeting, meeting into this issue of safer roads. They also looked at pathways, we know. In the end, they identified a number of roads in the township that needed attention. These are paved roads, these are gravel roads, these are roads that needed, they thought, to go from gravel to paved, to address preventative maintenance issues. As a result of that, they came up with a list of roads that they would, they recommended and this board accepted as needing improvement. And over the next 10 years, that budget was estimated at $9 million. And the funding mechanism for that, they proposed, recommended, was a millage question for the voters in November. That millage is one and a half mils for the average homeowner in Heartland Township with a home value of $200,000. That'd be about $150 a year for the next 10 years. There are a number of roads that were slated for improvement. Like I say, gravel and paved the like. And the pathway issue did not stay as a part of this millage proposal, as the public feedback weighed slightly heavier to the side of making it just about roads. With this road millage, we would be able to look at some capital projects that do involve pathways through going after grants and SADs and the like. And so that would be a secondary piece of the millage if the voters chose to approve it. So, much more information in this entire report is available on our website dedicated to this question, heartlandroads.com. And otherwise, there's a lot of detail there. I'm happy to answer any questions the board has or any that may come up during the public hearing.
Does the board have any other comments at this point?
I think it would be helpful if James could at least highlight those 10 roads that are included.
Yeah, the... I'm trying to find the short version of this. These are the paved roads and the gravel roads, and then one new paved section of road that's being discussed, and their project costs. There's, they're all, pretty much touches about every corner of the township. These are all roads that I think most of our residents regularly drive. These are roads that are local alternative routes to the east-west, north-south. So this is not M-59 or L-23, but these are the roads that you and I drive on a regular basis to get around, whether it be to schools or friends or neighbors. And they identified those roads by, you know, concentrating not only on their condition, but taking a look at average daily traffic counts and those types of factors when deciding which roads would be the higher priority.
On the, I have a question on Hacker Road. Have we reached out to Osceola and see where they are in their road plan and what they've thought? I know that they renewed their millage and often, I think they, they don't borrow. They collect the money first and then they do the improvements, correct?
That's their preferred method of operation. Supervisor Fountain and I met with them earlier this year and they reaffirmed their interest in that project. That particular project, that'd be a couple of years before they're ready. They've got some that they're already paying for and underway. But that will definitely be one they're still interested in.
Is that, does that Hacker Road also consider the other side of Hacker for short distance? I know where the church and St. John's are located. Does that contemplate a section of that?
This plan does not. I know that was a part of the previous plan, and my understanding is the parties would most likely still be interested in that. That is a relatively smaller project that could easily be added in. These estimates are conservative. We're quite confident that, you know, if the millages approve, that we can deliver these and then some. And so it'd be easy to add them. Anytime that we're able to leverage other dollars, whether it be Osceola Township, or the church, or both, you know, that's going to be the best make your money go further.
And in terms of the road commission, has there been any interest in our millage as from their end? I mean, have they talked to us? And what are their thoughts? Can they help us? I mean, it is the road commission's role, technically, so...
Yeah. And another factor that did go into the ranking of the roads is that we did get that feedback from the road commission as, you know, just a question to them as what do they see as the priority roads. They did that for us back in 2010 when that road committee met previously, and they sort of reaffirmed those things and said, you know, from our perspective, these are the roads you want to take a look at. And that is definitely a difference in this plan versus the 2010 plan because we didn't have paved roads receiving preventative maintenance on the 2010 plan. This one does, and that was partially from the feedback the road commission provided to the task force. And they, you know, either kept that order or changed a few up.
Does this plan take into consideration those gravel areas where, you know, just before the, sort of the skirt that, just before you get onto a paved road? And is there anything that takes into consideration possibly paving, you know, that skirt approach?
This plan does not. It pretty simply focuses on those roads. Again, if we're successful in bringing, delivering those projects under budget, which we believe it will be, that could be another discussion topic. And there's a few others that we have been talking about that is one of them, and I think it's a part of the strategic plan discussion later. We think some drainage improvements on some of these roads will make a world of difference, even if you don't touch the surface of the road at all. Just even doing some ditching and drainage improvements could go a long way and get better return on the investment. Some chip seal applications could work on some of these gravel roads to start to harden the surface there. So that may be something we want to explore in the future. I think we'll have that flexibility in this plan.
I received a call from a taxpayer in Heartland on Pleasant Valley, which I am also with them. And it seems to me that there seems to be continuing problem with the water drainage off, drainage coming off that road.
Yep.
And that it's just a constant problem with, you know, the traffic, the traffic counts, as I recall, I'm far exceeded in my discussions with my crane are that it's long overdue to be paved, but you don't get anywhere with the county on it. So I don't think it's, I mean, our plan does propose to, you know, place some, I believe, limestone gravel on it and in that area. But I think that hopefully we can, if the state does address roads in lame duck session, which is not likely based on what I've heard, I think we ought to try and leverage what we can if this millage passes to address that major thoroughfare vis a vis with the county. I think it's just, that road is just a prime example of something that needs to be addressed.
I would definitely endorse that as well to keep our options open. Pleasant Valley Road, in my mind, as a county major road, would be a perfect candidate for the road commission to go after from some state money. And the road commission throw some money and then we could leverage our dollars further. That would be probably, Pleasant Valley and then Fenton Road would be two prime candidates for that.
Well, I know the election's in the fall, and Livingston County continues to be the 83rd or 82nd in terms of the, one of counties, of 83 counties in the state that gets the least amount of road funding. You probably, those who are listening might want to send an email to Mr. Hugh, and I'm sure he'd love to hear from you, or Cindy Danby, or Michael or...
Bill Rogers.
Or Bill Rogers. I mean, these guys are representatives. But I always hear representatives about talking about how they bring economic development and things to our community in Livingston County. I still am basically waiting for the road funding to come to Livingston County, as we sure haven't got. The mention is in November.
James, when it comes to the gravel roads, that is, this is a 10-year proposed millage? Yes. And those dollars may seem high, but that is because if there's a limestone application, it's my understanding that would happen twice during that cycle, not just a one-time application?
Yeah, ideally, a limestone application will give you a good five to seven-year life, and you'll want to cap it. We've estimated here two eight-inch. Reality is, is probably the second application, you could probably do a smaller cap. And that's again where we'd be coming in under budget by doing that in the five to seven-year mark. But those numbers represent two applications of limestone.
Any other comments that those?
I do. I just want the people to understand that we will be dictating the control of this money. It's not a blank check to the county road commission for them to do as they please. We will dictate full control of how this money is spent. And I think that's key.
Do you should remind people about tomorrow night, too?
Yeah, if anybody who couldn't attend tonight's meeting, we're having another meeting dedicated to the roads questions tomorrow night at 7:00, same place. And that will also be broadcast.
So James had a question. On the gravel roads, is there money also, I know you mentioned earlier about drainage issues, is, in the roads that are getting gravel applications, are we doing something to improve the drainage in those, on those roads?
There's some contingency built into those numbers, but we didn't get to the point of detailed plans like we did, say, in Bergen Road. If the millage is approved, we would definitely sit down and get in more detailed planning with the road commission about where some strategic drainage improvements would go a long way. I think, again, with the conservative approach to the budget, we should be okay to do some of the low-hanging fruit. Again, I would point towards Bergen Road as an example of some simple things that we did. Certainly wasn't a major overhaul, and it's not to say that stormwater isn't still a factor out there, but we did take away a lot of the obvious issues by doing some simple improvements. So we would start there.
Mike, please comment, Manager Wickman, on the timing, proposed timing under the, in this plan.
Most all the projects are recommended to be done in the first couple of years after, if the millage is supported. And we would look to bond for those. We're having active conversations with the bond attorney and the engineers. The engineers have to give us a letter regarding the gravel roads and the life expectancy in order to have those included in the bonding. I think most of the projects, if not all, should be able to be done in the first couple of years. Hacker Road, obviously, we're waiting on a partner for that. If for some reason we identify an opportunity on some of those other roads with a grant or something, we would delay for that reason, of course. But the plan is move forward in the first couple of years after the millage is approved. Other improvements or the reapplication or other things we might want to experiment with, with a chip and seal or other drainage improvements, or paving of gravel road approaches to pavement, could also happen towards the tail end of the millage, because it will fluctuate what comes in based on where the taxable value goes.
And with the amount of gravel roads we have, the amount of chloriding would be increased, would be doubled compared to what we're currently doing it?
Yes. Well, we did add the third application this year, so this does propose adding a fourth application for, over that 10-year period. So, and we've already seen good results with the three applications. This would propose add a fourth application and hope to, especially on those new limestone roads, you get new limestone with good chloriding, you get a good hard compacted surface to drive on. So four applications will be ideal for that.
Any other comments by the board? If there aren't any, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody that would wish to comment, feel free to come forward and state your name and your address. If not, you can raise your hand in the back of the room, and we'd be happy to... Anybody, any comments tonight on our public hearing? Being none, again, we will have a second meeting tomorrow evening. All this information is available on our website. Call the office if you have any additional questions. I'm sure staff would be willing to do whatever they can to answer any questions.
And I'd be remiss, I should have already, a big thank you to the roads task force. We have some of the members here tonight, and some from the board shared, and of course to staff who helped, helped them in their job. It was, it was a lot of time involved, but it was very rewarding experience. So I thank everybody who contributed to this.
With that being said, I would like to close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our next agenda item. We have no pending business this evening. New business, Township Hall Generator. And would that be DP Director, DPW Director West or Manager Wickman?
I can briefly, I don't know if the board has questions. We've been previewing this for a while now. With the abandonment of the Woodcliff Well, there was a generator over there, as well as some other equipment will be taken care of. But we, there was a generator there. We talked about potential uses for it, where that could be. One of those we talked about was here at Township Hall. When we first built the building, I know there was a little bit of discussion when I came onboard about whether or not we needed a generator. My answer wasn't easy. No, that type of investment wouldn't be necessary. Since we've been in this building, we've had a number of problems with the three-phase power, losing legs of it, blips, being out of power. And fortunately, most of those instances have happened on Fridays, for whatever reason. When I've been here or over the weekend, I think we've been very fortunate that more of those didn't happen during the week. We did have one of those or two of those in the last year. Whenever that happens and we have to shut down for the day, we're losing over $3,500 in payroll and productivity. And that certainly makes the math a little bit easier. Here, we have an opportunity to acquire a generator and have it installed at a pretty discounted price from what a new one of this size would cost. And so, all that being said, I do offer the motion that's been recommended. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Is this the natural gas?
This is.
And we have, and we have gas?
Yes.
Available gas here?
Yep.
I have a question on disaster, emergency disaster preparedness, issues associated with the generator. Are we, is the Township Hall designated as an area in the event there was a, some sort of disaster in the community?
I'm not aware of the county emergency management designating us that way. We could, you know, offer that, or at least just be, whether we like it or not, that may very well be a place that people come to looking for such assistance.
Okay. And that's, that would be why I would certainly support this as an alternative site in the event.
Yeah, it's a secondary bonus, yeah.
I was reading through it, I didn't see this. How big is that generator?
Memory certainly incorrect. ADKW-80.
You said it could run just about everything, but maybe not all the air conditioners at one time?
Well, anytime that they size a generator, you generally size it to not run everything at the same time. That would, basically, you'd be oversizing it essentially. It is, it's actually larger than what they would generally size for this building. So they said it would be capable of running everything. It's really going to tax it. So just, you know, you wouldn't want to run all your heating units or all your AC units at the same time as you're running everything else. So as long as you're conscious of that, you said it's sized appropriately for this building, quite frankly.
And another question. The phones and everything that would work if the power was out, there's no reason that the golf, where the facility wouldn't be open?
Phone, internet, cable broadcast, that's really, power outages have stopped that in the past.
So it'd be functional, everything?
Yeah, they'd be, we'd still be able to run the cable broadcast, everything.
Any other questions or comments? If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the transfer of $6,000 to the Water Fixed Assets Fund to purchase the generator to authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute a standard contract for services with Heartland Electric, and to approve a budget amendment of $17,000 for the Township Hall capital outlay. It's important.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Jermaine. Is there any other comments or discussion? Being none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Board reports. Our second meeting in October starts with Treasurer Horning.
This Saturday is the last farmer's market of the season, and they're going to have pumpkin carving for the children. So pumpkins will be available at 10:30. Deputy Sheriff Bill Smith will be there to help the kids, and it's up at the old Heartland High School on 59.
What time is that?
10:30 in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Kalani?
Hi, nothing to report.
Trustee Jermaine?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Clerk Hopkins?
I'd just like to remind everyone that Election Day is two weeks from today, and the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heartland Educational Support Center in the old high school. Also absentee ballots are available through the clerk's office. And we will be open on Friday, October 31st, and Saturday, November 1st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. U.S. voters was getting absentee ballots. That's it.
Thank you. I should have mentioned this earlier, but I'd like to thank Bob West for, if you noticed in our consent agenda, that there were actually three grants that were based on your efforts that were brought in. Two of them were for trees, for Heritage Park, that totaled 4,000. And then you had another, I believe, $5,400 grant from DEQ for the wellhead protection. And I know that we talked about that, even at our last budget hearing, that we wanted to spend more effort on that. And I want to say thank you for researching those and actually getting those applied to our community. So, good work. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor. I don't really have anything to necessarily highlight out of the operational reports. Of course, I'm happy to answer questions. If I can take a minute, I yield some time to Mr. West, just to talk briefly about Bullard Lake. I know Trustee Jermaine had to inquire about it. And he can give a brief overview of what's happening out there and answer any questions, or try, from what we know about that.
Thank you. It was recently discovered that some trees were being taken down around the Bullard Lake Dam along Bullard Road. And upon further investigation, the property was recently transferred to the Livingston Land Conservancy. However, the easement, if you will, around the actual lake was actually deeded by the conservancy to the Bullard Lake Association. One of the struggles DEQ's had with the former owner was the dam was not in compliance. And obviously, we know the issues historically that the dam has faced affecting the road as well as the residents in that area. And DEQ has basically said, first thing you need to do is remove the trees. You're not allowed in the permit. It does require all the trees to be removed from the dam. In addition to that, the DEQ will do an annual inspection of that and determine if additional soils or stabilization is required for the dam. So I guess to kind of sum it up, it's, MDQ is certainly looking over that dam now. It is under their jurisdiction through the Bullard Lake Homeowners Association. I have requested a permit, a copy of the permit. However, it has not technically been issued. They're in the process of issuing it, still working out the details as to what they need to do to come into compliance. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and answer any questions that you guys may have regarding that.
So I just want to get a clear understanding. Is the dam owned by the conservancy or by the homeowners association?
Homeowners Association.
Is the homeowners association all up to date in terms of legal standing?
And that's what they're working on right now with DEQ. DEQ has said they're pleasantly surprised after many historical issues with the former owner that they're now has a willingness to come into compliance with the dam.
Well, that's not my question. My concern is, is all along, that poses a risk, obviously, to downstream property owners in addition to, I was involved early on on behalf of the board with the Drain Commissioners' Office. And I think one of the things we discussed was then setting up either a lake improvement board of some sort to deal with that dam. And I don't know if they've ever done that. Have they done that? Because there's no mechanism, technically, no legal body technically, that could deal with that dam should that break?
Quite frankly, I'm not sure of that. I haven't really dove into it. I'm working with the DEQ to get a copy of that permit.
Yeah, they have not. And my understanding is their intention is not to do so. The ball is squarely in their court in that regard. And those conversations sort of concluded several years ago with the Drain Commission that that was the case. Any future breaches of those berms on the south or anything like that was up to the homeowners association to deal with. And as far, and to be perfectly frank about it, if for whatever reason that lake goes away in the future, you know, that's not, not a, it's a, it's a private lake. It's not a concern of the Drain Commission and wasn't a concern of the township. But if they wanted to do anything more, they would have to figure out how to fund that or do that themselves, so...
Well, the only problem I have is that the homeowners association, I'm curious as to what legal standing, I mean, is it a nonprofit entity that's been created, or is it, they just exist as a group of homeowners who call themselves an association? It'd be interesting to know because part of that DEQ process is they're going to have, probably demonstrate they have insurance, they have to do a whole lot of things, which Lake Improvement Board would be in a better situation to do. And I'm concerned also because the township has property along Bullard Lake as well, where the Heritage Park is located. And I don't know if we have any say in all of what's going on, but I'm concerned that that dam will burst one of these days. And I'm more concerned about the people downstream than I am losing the lake. So we just need to keep an eye on that in this situation, I guess.
That's what we have been. There's no question that's still less than ideal situation. As Bob said, it's certainly an improvement from, you know, at least have some cooperation, at least with who owns it now. And it's definitely in DEQ's jurisdiction, and they've not seen fit to be any more regulatory about it than they have. And so some level of cooperation is moving in the right direction.
Well, that's good. Well, that's good. It's fine.
Thank you. James, do you have anything else on your reports tonight?
Unless there's any questions from the board.
Any questions for Manager Wickman? Any questions for Manager Wickman? Being none, we'll move on to our information and discussion on our strategic plan and our draft tasks.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I pass out for you. This is our first crack at potential tasks to undertake over the next two years in regards to the 15 objectives that we've previously discussed. This is an early draft, so my preface to this would be several points. One, I fully expect that before this thing's done, there will be changes to this, either adding or subtracting or revising to. What we have not done yet is identify clearly through staff who all the champions would be and who is going to have to be a contributor to these things. As we go through this conversation, we'll have to do that. We'll have to look at the feasibility of, you know, achieving all those things with existing staff. And so as we look at deadlines, as we look at a two-year timeframe, I expect that we'll be coming back to you with more feedback on, as we drill deeper, that, you know, we can or cannot accomplish all that's out here. So I offer this as a draft with those asterisks firmly applied. So with that in mind, certainly wanted to make you aware of what our thoughts were from our brainstorming and coming up with what we think will be tasks that we can pursue over the next two years, that move the dial on the objectives and the goals that the board has set through the retreat and through conversations before and after that. Hopefully, we're pretty close to meeting what the board is expecting in that regard. We'll want to, we'll continue this conversation, start it here, but continue this conversation on Thursday with a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and into the November meetings as we try to get this focused in on a final draft of the plan. So I don't necessarily have intention to try to go through these one by one and have lengthy discussion about each one. Wanted to give this to you, to give you some time to chew on it and become familiar with it, identify any low-hanging fruit of any obvious misstatements or anything that's missing or should be revised. Hopefully, you'll find that these tasks, should we accomplish them, would make progress on each of the objectives that we've stated.
What's this TAP program?
That's the, talked about it with SEMCOG, that's the money for pathways, streetscape.
Yeah, it's the SEMCOG program.
So, James, a question.
Yeah.
How are you going to prioritize the dates for this plan?
That's, I could have, if you recall, with past plans, I already filled in the dates for you when I brought you the first draft. And that's something we could have done. That's staff and I, or directors and I, talking through, okay, here's a reasonable timeline to get all these things done, and we'll definitely go through that. But as we're doing that, I figure it's just as well to start having these conversations, and if we identify some things that need to be shuffled around or taken right out, then we can save some energy on doing our work planning through it. But as we, you know, the next iterations of this, I would expect to see some champions and target dates starting to fill in as we figure out what can be achieved.
To implement local zip code improvement strategy, have you had some initial discussions with USPS, United States Postal Service?
Not yet with the Postal Service. It was on my strategic plan to accomplish by December to have that conversation. I've just not had time to get to it.
Okay. I'm just wondering, James, if we need to get someone like a Mike Rogers, or he's on his way out, but someone?
That would certainly be my first thought. I have looked into this issue enough because Tyrone Township was pushing this question as well. What I've discovered is, I discovered a number of case studies where communities have, you know, undergone a couple different strategies to this. What I found and what they have said as much is that that really makes no difference. The US Postal Service is by law and really practically speaking separated from political influence, or their budget is not controlled by the Congress or any of that. So that is really, I mean, it looks good on paper, but it really doesn't do much for you. We can certainly do that, and I think if, especially if we were to join forces with Tyrone Township, you know, we could, you know, try to do that. That would not be a high priority. I think there are some practical ways, and the Postal Service has some ways, to have those conversations in a very reasonable way. Just, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Would Spark be a team member to join us in this cause for economic development?
That could be. I think we can, definitely our angle is, you know, the, a number of them that have to do with the division it creates in our community, to the sense of community, and economic development being one of those. We can talk about all sorts of anecdotes of how that, how having seven zip codes and 36 square miles really...
Makes no sense.
Makes no sense, and it's just goofy. It's all get out. And we have pictures worth a thousand words. You've seen the picture. Not to make this all about zip codes tonight, but I think we've got some good arguments there.
I think we should change our logo. As a small businessman here in Hartland Township and doing a lot of work for livestock producers throughout the state, I get the chance to frequent a lot of small post offices. And I would say Hartland's downtown village post office qualifies as one of those. If you're not aware, the post office is currently seeking public comment from a lot of these smaller post offices to determine whether or not they should even remain in existence. So being that we know the post office has been losing money for a number of years now, the management might be wising up to the point where they're realizing they need to close some of these smaller post offices. And based on what the employees in the village office have told me, they're one of them that's under consideration.
Yeah, I've heard that rumor in years past. The Postmaster General a few years ago put out a white paper on that issue, and they identified a tier of post offices that could potentially be considered for that. And while they have pulled the trigger on closing some, they left a lot that were yet to be closed, and Hartland was nowhere on that list. So it makes good fodder for rumor, but what I've seen on white paper from the Postal Service would suggest that's not the case, that there's plenty of other fish in the sea on really small post offices that make no sense, that would be the first, in the first line to go. That's my take on it, anyway.
So back to that statement. Are you asking us to prioritize ourselves, and then you're going to try to compile, or?
No need to prioritize them, just because the target dates, while the board may have some interest on some of them on when they get done, that's really going to be more so a function of directors and I figuring out when they can be accomplished. And we'll take into account common sense things under certain times of the year, or certain things are obviously a priority when it comes to if the road millage passes. And I should have said that, this does make some assumption that, for now, this assumes that the road millage does pass. Obviously, by the time we meet at our next regular meeting, we'll know whether that's the case or not, and this can, plan can be tweaked if needed. But it's more so the tasks and how I've described them, whenever that might occur, does the board agree that accomplishing those tasks would be progress on the objectives that they're meant to influence?
So what's your timetable on this?
My hope is that by the second meeting in November, whatever discussion comes out of that will be the final edits to a strategic plan that the board adopts at the first meeting in December. That's my goal.
James, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission scheduled for this coming Thursday here at the Hartland Township Hall. Will this be discussed during that meeting as well?
I expect this will be a major part of the discussion. We'll forward this draft to them ahead of time so they can also take a look at it. And there's only two items on the agenda. One is the comprehensive plan, future land use map update, and Dave has a memo that has been shared with you. We'll walk through that and what that looks like. Obviously, that's a big job that the Planning Commission has before them. There are several things on here that I'm sure, I know I am interested in hearing dialogue between you and the Planning Commission on.
Are there any other questions on this this evening? Do you foresee this perhaps being a work session, standalone meeting?
Well...
Or do you think we can fit it in?
Yeah, I don't know if it's necessary.
It's premature to talk about that right now, but...
Yeah.
It's going to take a couple hours to go through this, I would think.
It could potentially, if we've been, if we successfully hit most of the things on the head, hopefully, we may not have to talk about it for too long. It's more of a question is, does the board agree that we're on the right track here? Is there anything missing? Anything we would revise? Anything we would focus more priority on? That kind of thing.
So you'd be looking for feedback from the board?
Yeah. In fact, even after, you know, individually, I'm happy to hear that feedback. But we'll definitely be on the next couple of work sessions and on Thursday night's joint meeting.
Any other questions for James? Anything else this evening at the other meeting? If there isn't anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Jermaine, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Did I mess that up again?
Was it Joe?
It was it? Oh, did I? Okay. It was Trustee Jermaine on the motion.
Who was it?
Trustee Kalani, sorry.
Kalani and Harper.
Kalani was the mover?
Yep. All of the papers say aye.
I was the chair.
Aye, as opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you.